Okay, so we're recording now folks and I think that's all our housekeeping done. Again, delighted you can all join us today and I'm going to pass over to Tila.
Good evening everybody, I'm Tila McDonald from the Awards Network for Scotland and it's a real pleasure to be able to join my colleagues from Education Scotland and be able to share this webinar with you. It's the first one that we've done and it's in response to some consultation that's been taking place. So we're just really excited to be able to share this information with you and raise awareness of the amazing things that awards can offer. Amazing Things is a bit of a tagline for us within the Awards Network. We were established in 2008 and we're a forum of over 35 awards providers of learning opportunities. These are non-curricular learning opportunities, so they're not part of the formal mainstream part of education. They're the informal bit, some of them take place in schools and some of them out with schools. But we raise awareness of the non-formal learning for ages 10 to 25. Some members offer SEQF accredited qualifications and the majority offer other forms of recognition such as badges and levelled awards. So there's a huge variety, as you're going to find out today, you're going to get a chance to hear about some case studies. And there's other great inputs that you'll get to hear from. So if I can tell you briefly about our strategic partners. We have the Scottish Government, SEQF, Education Scotland, the Youth and Philanthropy Initiative, SCDI which is now known as Prosper and Youth Link Scotland are all our strategic partners. And as I mentioned, we have over 35 awards providers and between them, they offer in the region of over 70 different awards across Scotland. So it's a phenomenal number of opportunities out there and some of them will be very familiar to you and some of them will be a lot less familiar and we hope to make you more aware of the ones you know less about by the end of today. Awards get counted by the Awards Network and it's a good role to be able to play to carry out that research and gather that kind of information because before the Awards Network existed, this information wasn't readily available and we've now been tracking it over a number of years. And the fantastic news for this year is that we have over 133,000 awards that were distributed to young people in Scotland. It's our highest number yet, it's an increase of 46% on last year's figures and it's up 10% since before Covid. So that's fantastic news for awards provision within Scotland and it shows that there's a real appetite for people to take up these awards, especially when we're still in a time of post-Covid recovery. If you look at a bit of a breakdown of how that breaks down between accredited and non-accredited awards, you can see that around about a quarter of awards have SEQF level accreditation. Now, from the Awards Network's perspective, having that kind of accreditation is not the most important thing. The experiences are what matters most, but it still shows that the awards can be levelled on the equivalent accreditation framework as formal award, so there is an equivalence there. If we look at the breakdown across different authorities, the main thing to highlight from that is it's really quite variable across the country and that's something that as a network we hope to start addressing in the year and probably a few years ahead. But the good thing is that for all authorities have at least 20% of young people achieving a youth award and that's when we calculate the number of awards as a proportion of the secondary school population. And we also know that there's four authorities that are obviously working extremely hard within youth awards and have really bought into the whole concept because four of them have more than 50% of their secondary school population achieving youth awards. So we're going to do the very first activity for you and the first thing we want to pause and ask you about before we share some of our information is from what you already know, note down in the chat what you think is that's beneficial for young people in taking part in youth awards. So we'll give you a couple of minutes to start adding some of those comments into the chat. So yeah, we can see things coming in like building independence, confidence and so on. Alice Murray saying might be the only form of accreditation that young people get, which is a real advantage of youth awards actually, that if young people aren't necessarily academic and don't want to sit exams, that this can be accreditation. Jo is mentioning the fact that award providers take a youth worker approach about starting where the young person's at. It isn't about grading, which is also a real positive. Grant Edwards talking about recognising achievements out with traditional curriculum, which again is important to remember that this can be about recognising activities young people do out with school as well as things that they can do within school. Yep, good. So this has shown us that, you know, many of you are already quite expert in some of the knowledge about awards, which is a really good foundation to start from. We have prepared some of our thoughts around it and there are four main areas that we've split this into. One of them is experiences. We would say that youth awards bring real experiences to young people, allowing them to solve real problems in real places and find out what they can do to make a difference. And I think that bit about the experience being real is something that makes it enjoyable to young people because it's not reading about it in a book as a comparison. And connections is always really important when we ask young people what they like about awards and that bit about being able to make friends and connect with other people, that they don't feel like they're on their own when they're doing youth awards. And also it's really important to have good adults beside young people when they're engaging in these awards, which is an important part of how the awards should be structured. Skills are often not the most important thing to young people, but they are an incredible output and outcome to achieve as part of taking part in awards. And what we're learning from the wider world is that the kinds of skills that get developed through awards are the things that employers want to hear more and more about. And employers say that when young people can tell them about their awards journey, they've got a story to tell and it makes them a much better candidate in their eyes. And accreditation is there too, even if it's formal SEQF accreditation, then employers and colleges and universities are able to see exactly what that means. But even where that doesn't exist, there's often a good track record, a good reputation that comes with the award that makes it really credible and a really viable option. If we ask young people about their, how they view awards, there's quite a range of things that come out, things like they're able to try new things, go new places, discover what they're good at, because quite often young people don't find that out until after school and awards give them a taste of a variety of things where they get to find some of that out. Making friends, going on adventures, there's often quite an adventurous part of awards and there's residentials and things like that involved. Solving problems, taking risks, risks are important and sore mistakes. And getting out of your comfort zone is a really important aspect of it. And very often within the award, there are opportunities to give back to your community and to be able to volunteer and research shows that that has a really strong wellbeing effect on people that engage in it. So there's lots of amazing positives that come from taking part. If you look at policy, there, anyone who's been involved in the education and learning environment lately will know that there's been quite a number of reports coming out that we're all trying to grapple with. All of the reports have been extremely positive about the role of awards. And one of the things to highlight, for example, is that there was an HM My Review of Youth Awards in Scotland which said that they play a key role in helping young people to be successful, confident, effective and responsible citizens with a greater focus on non-formal experiential learning and the development of personal and interpersonal skills and competencies. So I think that's a really good summary of what youth awards are really set up to achieve. An important thing to recognise now, particularly with the Royal Assent being granted to the incorporation of UNCRC into Scots law, is that Article 29 defines education as going far beyond formal schooling to embrace the broad range of life experiences and learning processes which enable children individually and collectively to develop their personalities, talents and abilities and to live a full and satisfying life within society. So I think that's a very different definition of education to just ensuring that young people have a right to attend school. It goes far beyond that. Within the Independent Review of Qualifications and Assessment, the Awards Network met with Louise Hayward and contributed well to that consultation. And Recommendation 8, for example, looks at including the personal pathway element as a prerequisite for the award of the diploma and just saying it's an entitlement and must be available to all learners. And that's probably linked to Article 29 that that recommendation comes about. And we're still waiting for confirmation as to what is going to be decided around that, but I think the decision on that is fairly imminent. In the Document on Improvement Outcomes for Young People Through School Education, the document says that school education is not just about exam results. And I think that's important to recognise that there's been some critique externally about Scotland in relation to our reliance on high-stakes exams for young people. If we look at the Skills For document which has been produced, it talks about the meta-skills and it's basically developed a skills model to drive Scotland's future. And what it's reminding us is that we're in a context where robots are really going to be able to do a lot of the physical skills that humans have ordinarily done in the past. So actually it's our human capacities that matter more now and awards give us incredible opportunities to develop those. So that's a very quick overview of what awards are. I'm going to now pass it over to Julie and Jamie, who are going to present some of the findings from the Fourth Valley West Lothian Achievement Project.
Thanks, Tila. So again, once, I want to kind of cover some of the work that was done recently over the last year within Fourth Valley in West Lothian, which was a piece of research that was conducted by ourselves in Education Scotland alongside the support of the Awards Network, Youth Link Scotland and also our colleagues within the Fourth Valley and West Lothian Regional Improvement Collaborative. The idea of this research was to really go out there and have a look at what achievement was. And we all know what the word achievement means because we attach it to youth awards quite critically, but at the same time, what is the sort of the wider system think of achievement? What are the kind of things that they do with it? How do they involve children and young people with it in different situations and settings? And essentially the idea was to see, get a better picture of what educational establishments, be that schools, be that youth groups, community-based settings were doing when it came to achievement. So just moving on, some of the kind of things that we looked to examine were the idea of, well, the bigger picture of achievement and ultimately what we can sort of see as a result. And the general overview was that we would go out and speak to primary schools and secondary schools alongside CLD providers, just to determine how much achievement is recorded and recognised within these different situations. Is it something that's valued? Is it something that's celebrated? Is it something that's reported on? Is the information gathered on it in particular ways? We looked to kind of ask those kind of key questions because at the moment that information is quite anecdotal. The methods we looked at was we asked kind of five key questions about that idea of what achievement was and did they really capture that sort of picture of what practitioners were doing in very specific settings? But before going into the sort of results and what we found, it's important to understand what personal achievement means. Often there's a general confusion when it comes to achievement, that the term should be wider achievement. But when you actually look at Curriculum for Excellence and all the work that's normally done, personal achievement is the correct term and I think this definition here really sums up that idea of recognised as part of learning through a children and young person's education. It's something that encompasses all achievement, so it's not just kind of siloed into that one place. But really, quite importantly, it's not just, sorry, it doesn't just happen in school. It can be conducted by any sort of practitioner that works with a child or young person. So it can be a youth worker, it can be a volunteer, it can be a teacher and it can be done in different settings as well. But the idea of personal achievement focuses on profiling what a child or young person achieves, what are the kind of elements they get out of it and what for each young person is likely to be, who are the adults that are best placed to support them in these different situations? So I'm going to pass to Julie now, who's going to take you through the questions we asked, but also at the same time the findings we have made as a result of this research and as a result of that, what recommendations we ultimately made to the system. So pass to yourself, Julie.
Thanks, Jamie. So yeah, we had five key questions that we kind of started this project with and these kind of evolved as we conducted our research. The first one was about how schools and CLD providers and lots of community groups, how did they currently recognise children and young people's personal achievements out with the kind of formal curriculum that we see generally in schools? So really looking at what's happening and how is it recognised? We then wanted to think about what support children and young people have in schools and in their communities to be able to reflect on their achievements and record their own achievements. So the element of ownership and agency came through really strongly, so we wanted to find out more about that. We looked at the data that providers currently gathered at a local level. So Jamie did a lot of interrogation of insight and we looked at data from the Awards Network and a wide range of awards providers, as well as data from local authority CLD systems and a wide range of other places to look at how individual children and young people's achievements were tracked and to try and get that broad picture of what's happening in our region and more nationally as well. We then looked at what effective practice we could help capture and what professional learning could be shared or adopted across the region. So this session today is obviously forming part of that and we wanted to look at how this pilot could help inform national discussions as well. So our findings really showed a strong commitment across schools and community partners in recognising and recording achievements. And lots of people were really keen in this piece of work and in finding out how we could do this in a more consistent way. There was some examples of really effective practice and the gaps that were identified were around a lack of awareness of what opportunities are out there in terms of awards, a focus on maybe traditional school-based activities only and maybe a tendency for some schools to focus only on awards that were recognised on insight. So we had a lot of conversation about tariff points and things like that as well and whether that was impacting on people's choice or usage of awards. As I touched on a minute ago, it was really indicated quite strongly that all participants recognised the importance of children and young people having ownership of their own achievements and being able to have time to reflect on and articulate the skills that they're developing as part of their learning journey. Some use of kind of local methods to record that were quite strong, but in the absence of a nationally recognised approach to recording achievements. So yeah, some really good bits of local practice around data capture and ownership, but no kind of national approach. The findings also indicated a kind of inconsistent, disconnected picture, meaning that the full range of children and young people's achievements are not currently fully being recognised. So if you are interested, we have a huge bit in our report about the data and the data sources and what that showed, but there was huge inconsistencies, huge gaps and a real inability for any system to be able to track what a child or young person's achieving in school and out of school. The data sources that were referenced included insight, local schools were gathering their own achievement data, performance management data from CLD as well, as well as the data from award providers and national completion figures from the Awards Network. And these disconnected systems really showed huge challenges in recording and sharing the data between schools and providers. And sometimes it just came back to that old thing of computer says no, it was just that things weren't speaking to each other throughout. So the findings also indicated partnerships were a huge positive. And establishments where youth work and schools' partnerships were strongest tended to offer the greatest range and depth of achievement-based opportunities and youth awards. There were some good examples of co-design of achievement opportunities and young people being able to go between schools and CLD partners and really capture things that were being achieved out with school and being recognised for that within the school. So partnerships and that kind of collaborative approach to achievements came through really strongly. Participants identified a range of professional learning needs for both school and CLD practitioners and part of that is about knowing what awards are out there, how can you access them and how can we work together to help children and young people achieve as much as they can. And when we were thinking around skills and being able to reflect on your own skills and measure impact, the National Youth Work Outcomes and Skills Framework was seen as a really valuable tool for CLD and school to be able to use together to support a common language around skills. So for example, having young people coming back from your Duke of Edinburgh award and being able to think and discuss about resilience, communication, teamwork and really having a tool to be able to monitor the impact of participating in such awards and activities. Jamie, I think it's back to you now.
Thanks, Julie. So I'm guessing that some of the messages there would have resonated quite truly with a lot of the practitioners in this call today. And some of the things that we found were, again, not something too surprising, but again, it paints that sort of picture of things need to improve to fully recognise personal achievement and make sure it's something that's utilised fully and gives children and young people the chance to really aspire. As a result of this research, what we conducted and what we did, we made 10 recommendations and these recommendations are given out to the whole system, so it includes schools, it includes youth work situations and includes CLD partners. And what we are sort of suggesting is if these implementations, if these recommendations are implemented, then this will improve some of the gaps that we found in our research. So to kind of go through the recommendations, because I think they're quite meaningful, we do make a recommendation that all schools have a designated educator, someone that's got that responsibility for promoting achievement, promoting youth awards and has an understanding of youth awards, that should be established. We know that exists in some schools, but we know it's not the case across all. Our second recommendation focuses on the idea of a member of staff having that responsibility to link to CLD providers and youth work and youth award providers. Again, based on some of the information that Julie just shared there, we found that it was strongest when those links and those partnerships already existed and it was weaker when they didn't. Our third recommendation focuses on that idea of local collaborative partnerships and the purpose of that is to develop achievement opportunities in youth awards. So it involves things like upskilling and shadowing, practice sharing. And some of the evidence that we gathered as a result of the report demonstrated there's a real willingness to provide achievement opportunities in youth awards, but sometimes that member of staff that wants to take it forward isn't confident in doing so and they wish they had someone to link to or someone to show them because the approaches to many youth awards are very personal in nature, their personal target and their personal focus, whereas the curriculum and education is different to that. So that's something, again, as a recommendation, we feel that makes a great difference. Moving on to the other recommendations, we hoped that school and CLD partners, including youth work providers and youth award providers, should look to build a common language because again, some of the language differentiation between providers and educators can be quite different. Even the term achievement in itself can be misused, it can be mixed up with attainment. And again, that differentiation between wider achievement and personal achievement. So where we recognised that there was youth award providers and youth workers working quite closely with schools and having that common language, that's again where we found it was strongest because everybody was on the same page. Our fifth recommendation is that idea of schools using tracking and monitoring tools to see what achievement opportunities are there. And the reason behind this is because it should be used to target those that are maybe not involved. So again, in some schools that we visited, they had a sort of census of, or a tracker of what children and young people were involved in opportunities in and out with the school. And if they weren't involved in anything, they could look to provide extra support and equity-based approach to try and involve those children and young people in that particular achievement opportunity or provide them with a youth award. Again, to make that impacting them, so to recognise success within themselves and get the opportunity to develop skills and abilities that they may not otherwise. Our sixth recommendation looks to the idea of consulting with children and young people to identify what they would like to see within their school and their school community. So conducting a census and we recognise this was done in some schools and done in partnership with youth work providers and CLD providers. And again, we found that when that was done consistently, the offering was much more robust instead of just a range of choices that were available based on what practitioners thought the young people and children might want. And moving on to our last sort of few recommendations, we kind of look at the kind of the bigger picture about CLD providers and schools developing approaches together to recognise and record achievement consistently. Time and space being made available to articulate and reflect upon what achievements have been made by children and young people. But again, that ability to record it in that sort of particular way should be developed fuller. And again, it's an inconsistent picture across the region. We found that there wasn't anything that we worked across both boundaries. Insight was a great tool for demonstrating awards that were on the SEQF framework, but most specifically, some awards were not being fully recognised in particular areas, like particular local authorities or particular schools or learning communities if their Scottish candidate number wasn't part of that. So just inconsistencies there that could be addressed by that sort of working together. We also saw that the Youth Working Outcome Skills Framework was a really good tool for mapping what skills were being developed if a youth award wasn't attached or again, if youth award was looking to develop what skills were as part of that. We're currently looking to do and doing some pilots with schools and CLD providers using that outcome and skills framework. Again, if you've not seen it, it's something that's really, really useful. It demonstrates what skills can be developed as a result of being involved in any opportunity and some of the indicators that demonstrate that, that's a really good way of measuring skills and doing that in a sort of concise way with children and young people. Moving on to the last slide there, we realised there was a lot of innovative approaches that were used by schools specifically to recognise achievement and some of this involved sharing what was done in the community and the youth group and the school building. And some was very sort of visual in regards to promoting social media. Some was more organic, where children and young people had to talk about what they've done, like if they'd won something or if they were involved in a particular group in the community and that gained recognition within the school situation. And that gained recognition within the school situation, something they wore or some sort of merit they could share. So there was a range of innovative approaches where you saw, we believe that that's something that can be grown by sharing those approaches and making a sort of catalogue or a database as such of what's available. And finally, the idea of the Awards Network providing regional feedback and regular approach, ability to share the data and gather data. And we did recommend that postcode data should be consistently collected as a result of the awards that have been achieved by children and young people that are doing youth awards. Moving on to the last sort of kind of part here, all those recommendations have been sort of well received by the kind of organisations, partners and schools that we've engaged with. But there's some challenges that come as a result of trying to implement it. Some of the implementations require a difficult for some, and the reason for that is time and capacity. So again, the time for an educator to be in charge of developing achievement or youth awards or developing those partnerships. Also in some ways about that sort of capacity to try something new, maybe again confidence. So we recognise there is challenges there. Like I mentioned before, candidate numbers can be a challenge because again, if you're a youth work provider developing a dynamic youth award, for example, in the community and you don't know the candidate number, how do you get that? Who do you contact? This is the kind of information that helps paint a more cohesive picture. But one of the things we recognise quite coherently is a solution to this is partnerships. So that idea of working with national agencies such as the Awards Network, Scotland and Youth Link Scotland, but also those kind of local partnerships. Again, the research did highly recognise the fact that when CLD providers, youth work providers and schools worked together in a very consistent way, when it came to youth awards and achievement, it was stronger and it was more robust and it was more consistent. When they're separate, it was weaker. And I think that's like a kind of key message we want to highlight as a result of this research. And one of the solutions as well about measuring what the actual impact is, is looking at outcomes and impact of children and young people. And again, youth work outcome and skills framework is a really strong way of demonstrating how that can be done. And I know we touch upon that a wee bit later, but the findings of this research are publicly available. Kind of put a wee link in the chat there if anybody's interested in seeing the more kind of granular detail. But we are using these recommendations to sort of change things within the system and move ideas forward specifically about education reform. Pass back to yourself, Tila.
Thank you so much, Jamie and Julie for covering that. I think overall, the achievement project in the fourth valley west Lothian has been an excellent piece of work, not just for the area, but for every local authority in Scotland to learn from, just in terms of, you know, a big thing that hit us really strongly is that the number of awards being achieved was really underestimated at a local level, even even where there were good partnerships. And I think that's, you know, really worth having a look at and maybe considering doing research like this in your own area. We are going to give a little bit of time to you and set you a little challenge now. And we're, we're going to ask you to look up the www.AwardsNetwork.org website. And once you've done that, we have a little task for you. I have to say that we have literally just hours before going live, turned on a new version of the website just for this exercise, so that you get the benefit of the new search facility, which is a little bit more sophisticated than it was this morning. So you're the very first to get your hands on this. And hopefully this works for you. But assuming that everybody has now opened up AwardsNetwork.org, the exercise we are going to ask you to do is pick one of these scenarios and challenge yourself to try and find an award or find something out about awards that you don't already know. So you pick a scenario that might take you out of your comfort zone a little bit and get you looking at something that's maybe a bit unfamiliar to you. And so if you don't know anything about awards, you can pick anything. But if you know something already, then try to choose something that is going to steer you into an area that you've maybe not considered or thought about before. So scenario one is about designing a pathway of awards for a youth group aged 10 to 12 that want to spend more time outdoors. So there is a nice outdoor one for someone who maybe hasn't looked at that area before. Scenario two is design a pathway for a group of young people who are getting ready to leave school and they're aged 15 and as yet they don't have any qualifications. So what might you consider for a group in those circumstances? And scenario three is about designing a pathway that introduces new Scots, so that's refugees and asylum seekers aged 14 to 16 to the concept of volunteering. And that's because volunteering isn't culturally a concept that's familiar to them. So we're introducing it to them as a way to gain skills and experience and connect with their new community. So choose one of those scenarios and see if you can design a pathway. What we mean by a pathway is that we want you to choose at least two awards that you would introduce to this group. So not just one award, but we want you to have two and they might, they might run at the same time. Or you might have one on entry level and one that a bit more of an advanced level. It's up to you. Think about what's right. And then once you've done that, put some thoughts or reflections in the chat box and we can maybe have a bit of time for questions and discussion as well. So you can share some of your findings with us.
Thanks, Tila. I always think this is the time now where we should have some background music, but I won't sing. Everyone will be pleased to know.
We should be singing Burns, Julie.
I know, or doing a poem. Maybe I could nominate a colleague for that because I don't really have much skills in those areas. But if everybody's managing okay to get on the the site, that's perfect and and start finding the awards. But please feel free to give us a shout if you're struggling to get on. We did this activity not long ago at a conference and it was great being in a room doing this in person, having a look on the website as well. Because I think every time I look, there's different things come up for for different pathways. So it's a great detail.
I think the benefit as well is that if you might be working in a situation, you've never considered an award before, that using this tool really hones it down. You can maybe see that an award that fits your sort of general provision. So even with those scenarios there, thinking like in a professional context, if you work with a group of young people or children that you think you'd like to get them something. And I think that's the benefit of all this is that a lot of the work that's done for youth awards, it's already been done. It's already something that most practitioners are doing, but they're maybe not linking it to an award. And I remember a colleague of mine, especially when I was an initial youth worker, and I'm quite frustrated with like the idea of maybe time and capacity, et cetera. And I was doing different sort of youth provision. And she always said, well, if we're already working with these young people, don't we deserve getting them an award because of the things that they're doing? And that's always sort of stuck with me because again, the more awards a young person has when you leave education and they go into the kind of adult world, the better chance they have of being successful or finding the career or direction or pathway that they eventually want to go down. So that's still really kind of hones that all down to make it more realistic and more easy and not as confusing. So it's a really good tool.
Yeah, I think relationship building is a good advantage as well, that if you're, if you've got a group or even some young people in the group that you don't know so well, then you can work through a relatively simple award to just find out what they like and what they don't like and try some new things out with them. And so it can be really good from that perspective and give a wee bit of a structure to that. Once people start posting some thoughts and reflections in the chat, if people want to put their hand up, we can take some questions or we would really like to hear your thoughts and reflections on on what you've found out that you didn't know before.
Remember, as soon as you find an award that you think fits the scenario, just post it in the chat. And we're always getting to hear some other voices. Sometimes it's difficult when you speak into the the silence there. So if you've got any suggestions about any of these particular scenarios that you've found, then please just come in, Sheila. Sheila, see your hand up and you come.
Yes, just come in and a different voice. I haven't really looked at the scenarios at the fulls just saying I can't stay till the end, but it it just strikes me that the recommendations of your report, Jamie, that you talked about, which I've seen before. A lot of the recommendations, I think, are applicable nationally. I think we need to focus more on skills, which, you know, reinforce what you said. And I think this works best when there's parity of esteem in the situations you're in. I had that this very discussion this week in a school on inspection and around extending, you know, thinking about, well, they were calling it wider achievement, talking about achievement, how you get young people to think, you know, wider and how to get parents on board with that. So I think it's, it's very relevant, I think, to what you've, what you've covered today. And very useful. Thank you.
Very much agree with you, Sheila, and hopefully it's something that can be grown because again, as education reform happens, we hope that these recommendations and the work of the the Awards Network can shape that because it's not just all about formal qualifications, it's really not. We do, we do a disservice to young people if we just make them think that that's the most important thing in life, we really do.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, I think as well, Sheila, that what Jamie's saying, we, we don't know what the what the political decisions are going to be about the personal pathway, but I think there is enough of a ground swell of support across education and across different disciplines to support this kind of work through Scotland's curriculum. And so I'm sure there is going to be a strengthening of this going forward, no matter what the decision is. So I think that's really positive. And Cara, do you want to say a bit more about what you found?
Tila, I've just noticed that Mark's got his hand up as well. Mark, you want to come in?
Come in, Mark.
Yep. Hiya. Mark, I'm part of Scottish Borders Council. We work in partnership with the third sector a lot in our schools. And we look at individual pathways and we use a lot of these awards, but the stumbling block we tend to have is when it comes to employers and getting employers to understand what these awards mean to them. And the Scottish Borders, they get, you know, NAP4s, they understand hires, understand that what is traditionally done as a school award. So I'm just wondering where the promotion is for, you know, local employers, small employers, big employers about these awards so they can see and understand the SEQA framework. But again, employers will go, I'm sorry, I've got no idea what you're talking about, you know, give me somebody who's got English maths and you know, the kind of standard NAP4s, NAP5s or hires. So I just wonder what the thoughts are about taking this forward and how it will be promoted to employers and what organisations that we can bring in to help us push this out there.
John, I wonder if you want to answer that and maybe mention about some of the reviews that are going on, for example, with insight. I know you were part of that discussion.
Yeah, I suppose, you know, insight, people know from the school side is is a sort of mechanism for recording and benchmarking and certainly part of the work we did there was kind of based on that. I suppose Mark's point was maybe that other sort of discussions with employers and employer organisations. And I think that's certainly something the Awards Network has has looked at, Mark. I know there's, there's good case studies, for example, on the website from, from employers. But you're right, I'm sure there's work to do there. It's interesting and other people on the call probably know more about this than me, but certainly any research I've seen from employer organisations, when they ask, what are the skills that you're looking for for young people coming out of their education? It often is those kind of skills that we were talking about earlier on, those kind of softer skills. I think Tila was talking about, you know, the the kind of modern workplace needing more of those kind of, you know, I want people who can talk to other people, I want people who can work in groups, I want people who are constantly dealing with customers and so on. So there is definitely, I think, scope probably for more discussion with employers around about those issues. But I think, you know, the skills that are there, there's, there's a definite positive story to to start that discussion with employers.
Yeah, and we're going to, and we're going to touch on very shortly the the youth work skills framework. And I think the more we have a common language for describing the skills, you know, I think your report probably found this within fourth valley west Lothian, but everyone talks about skills in different ways. And so the more we can have a common language, then the easier it is for everyone. So I think trying to work towards that would be really useful too. Catherine, do you want to talk about the RSPB Well Challenge?
I can try. I did, I did only read the minimal amount, but I just thought, you know, obviously it threw up the right age ranges, it matched the sort of needs to the group. You could see there was diversity within it that you could tweak for the different sort of abilities and everything. And it met the brief of the outdoors, neurodiverse members. That's, I was actually thinking, I've got additional needs children as well as working in the youth work field. So I always have that hat on about what could my children benefit from? But I thought it was fascinating, you know, I didn't know there was such a wealth of awards out there because in my role, we tend to focus mainly on the the high five dynamic youth and youth achievement awards, because those are the ones that are quite heavily weighted and most recognised. So it was quite, it was quite cool to see actually all those other opportunities. And I'm already thinking, I'm going to send this to my kid's primary school head teacher and my, the head teacher of my kid's secondary school as well, because they, they do the same things, they stick to the more recognised ones, John Muir, Sol Tyre and those three that I've just mentioned. So this is fascinating. Sorry, I'm not really answering, but.
Oh no, you've answered it really well. I think, you know, that is, you know, a really fantastic thing that does sometimes get overlooked is that you know, it would be nice, I think, one, one of the things we're looking at within the network is highlighting more case studies and examples where you have one group and they're all of different abilities and they're all part of the same project, if you like. But within that project, they can all be, you know, working towards different awards or different levels of award. And and that makes it, you know, a more inclusive environment and experience. And it tailors it to that concept of starting where young people are at. And actually, that's what we should be doing instead of going with a fixed idea of this is the project and everyone's going to do this at the same level at the same time.
Yeah, because we're actually, even this morning, I was, we've got a project going at the minute and we're working on dynamic youth awards with them and they're, they're seen as challenging young men who aren't engaging in school. So we've got, actually got them at a local fire station and they're learning fire skills and learning from the actual staff there. Today they were in the full kit in a smokehouse. But their literacy skills, their math skills, their actual, those academic skills are, they're not there, but we sat with them and they filled out little bubble discussions about what they did well. So they have no idea what they've achieved, but we can help them to recognise that. And these are, you know, they're probably not going to leave school with anything. This is, they're an S1 and they've already got nothing, no achievements and really bad sort of school history. So So even seeing the potential in that and how they engaged in a different form of learning and their language, everything was changing. It's just, you know, I bang on quite a lot about alternative education and alternative pathways because we can't write young people off when they don't, they're not neurotypical and they can't sit on a chair in a classroom and learn the same way everyone expects them to learn. And who says that our future, that's what our futures are meant to be like? Because everyone says it's preparing them for the real world, but who dictates what? What like, that doesn't mean that you will end up sitting on a chair in a desk with a desk and that, that's the only option open to you. And we did a mixed thing where we did High Fives and Dynamic Youth back to back based on young people's needs at a local primary school as well. So I'm fully behind the sort of award system, I really am. It's just, it's great to know that there's so many more out there that we can tap into and some of them with no cost, which is even better.
Yeah, that, that is a fantastic selling point for those awards and makes them really popular, but they're really well constructed awards too, which is good. Yeah. Anyone else want to come in before John introduces us to the skills framework? Okay, John?
Thanks, Tila. Actually, we've heard quite a lot about the outgoing skills framework already this afternoon, colleagues, so I won't labour the point here. But I think both Julie and Jamie mentioned about the value of it. It's a great flexible tool that has been developed to support young people and people working with them to reflect on what they're learning through non-formal learning. And certainly there's, Jamie mentioned that it's getting really positive feedback within the Fourth Valley and West Lothian work and in other parts of the country, we're starting to see some really exciting work being done with the framework to articulate young people's learning and to gather evidence of impact. So examples of schools and our youth work partners using the framework to kind of gather some of that stuff that can be, might be quite hard to put your finger on sometimes. And I think Julie talked about the value of having that common language of skills to use. So if we look at the next slide, it just gives you a kind of example of how it works. There's basically seven broad outcome areas and then there's a series of skills that are aligned to that. And then a series of indicators through kind of ICAN statements. So certainly in examples, I've seen it used, you're not necessarily looking at all the outcomes all at once, but going through that and maybe taking a sort of package based on the learning, looking at the outcomes of skills and those ICAN statements encouraging young people to think about the skills that they're learning. So we put the link in the chat earlier on and we can certainly send it again. But if you haven't had a look at that already, definitely encourage you to look at it. It's been developed by Youth Link Scotland and with discussions within the youth work sector, but certainly colleagues we've been talking to in schools are really seeing the value of it as well.
Thanks very much, John, and I'd definitely endorse that recommendation. We now have a real treat for you. We, we've already heard something about High Five and Dynamic Youth and Youth Achievement Awards, which means that George Cherry from Youth Scotland and Joe McDonald are obviously doing a marvellous job in getting word out about those awards. We're now going to hear about a case study of those awards in practice within the Fourth Valley West Lothian area. So I'm going to hand over to George and let you take it away, George.
Thank you, Tila. I'll just give you a tiny bit of background and context to this before we go. Youth Scotland's a membership organisation, its main aim is to support community-based youth work. In membership, we have over 1,700 youth groups, six area associations, and we support over 9,000 youth workers, mainly volunteers and over 82,000 young people. In addition to that kind of membership focus, we also operate an awards programme that offers a range of awards for all, for young people of all abilities from age five to 25. Our awards are accessible beyond a membership and we currently have about 150 delivery hubs, over 230 delivery groups that include the member groups, area associations, local authorities, community learning development services, primary schools, secondary schools, NHS and third sector organisations. Now, the video case study that we're going to see, it features a collaboration between one of our member groups, Local Youth's Community Improvement Youth Group, OYCI, and Alva Academy. The video was filmed just on Friday there, used a mobile phone and then put from the young people, teachers, youth workers, it's all their own and in their own words. And we've also included some additional footage and photos received from OYCI. So that's the kind of the background to this. So if we want to maybe just now have a wee look at this case study that's there. Thank you.
Thanks so much, George. We're relying on my PATGIT skills. So if you could give me a wee thumbs up, if you can hear the video, okay, when it starts playing, that would be brilliant.
High five.
I won't say high five.
Okay.
Yeah, we're there.
Hi, I'm Elaine from OYCI and I work in collaboration with Alva Academy to deliver the awards programme. We deliver High Five for the Primary Sevens. We deliver, or give opportunities for young people to take part in Dynamic Youth Awards, Youth Achievement Awards and Leadership Programme. OYCI grew from work carried out by Alva Academy pupils about six years ago, where young people were consulted on youth provision within the community and they felt there was nothing available for them. So they actually set up OYCI within Alva Academy and it's grown from there. Youth Voice has been at the heart of our organisation, shaping our provision with young people making change happen. At Alva Academy, it's our Modern Studies staff. What we did a year ago is we reviewed our S2 course and using the experiences and outcomes for Criticism for Excellence, we created a brand new course called You Decide, which is around the principles of youth voice and young people having an opportunity to share what matters to them. So we have four members of staff who are qualified in Modern Studies. We all took a section and we developed a course over eight lessons, which is two weeks, where young people get to think about what matters to them and they then get to apply that to areas of the local community. And then from there, they can create issues and a campaign that matter to them. When it came to making the pitch, we brought in our other members of the social subjects faculty and also members of our senior captains. And using that, that was the evidence to put towards them getting their DYE, their Dynamic Youth Award.
Hi, I'm Eleanor from Alva Academy and working with OYCI, I've completed my Bronze Youth Achievement Award, my Ailead Dynamic Youth Award, Ready for Youthwork DYE, and I'm now working towards my Platinum Youth Achievement Award.
Hi, I'm Amy and I'm currently working with OYCI. The awards I have completed are Ready for Youthwork DYE, my Bronze Youth Achievement Award, my Level Five Dance Leaders Award and currently working towards my Platinum Youth Achievement Award.
Absolutely. Because of the principles of Criticism for Excellence, staff within schools have the opportunity to decide on a course that best fits the young people in front of them. We've worked closely with OYCI over the last few years and this was an ideal opportunity for us to look at our timeframes, to look at the partnership that we already have and come up with a unit focused around that. And it just so happened that in addition to developing the knowledge and the skills that we would normally, that we were able to give them an opportunity to get accreditation lower down in the school, which isn't often, it's easy, could be to see in your face.
So our High Five programme is running for a whole term from January to March. It's the fourth year of running the programme, third one of running it like this since Covid, where we are bringing the Primary Sevens in as part of their transition from primary to secondary. And they will spend a day with us in school, covering activities relating to transition, looking at the themes of friendship, teamwork and communication. We go out to the schools and do one hour with the pupils in their own classroom, introduce the challenge sheet, ask them to create their own working together agreement. So we have a sort of set of rules that we'll follow when they're here, get to know them, play some games, do some icebreakers and make a link with the primary teacher. We see a little link then after each session into our programme where they will come to some of our provision. Some of the youngsters will enjoy what they've done and they then understand a bit of what we do and before we know it, they're enjoying the sessions we run in our base.
Hi, I'm Rowan.
Hi, I'm Abigail. And we've both done the High Five Award, the Ailead Award and a Dynamic Youth Award.
What was your favourite part about doing the Youth Scotland Awards?
My favourite part was when we went into separate groups and we came up with our own games. What about you?
My favourite part was when we done the biscuit challenge.
What do you think is one of the skills you've learned from doing the awards?
It's helped me to get better at speaking in bigger groups. What about you?
Mine is is better at working in groups and improve my leadership skills. High five.
Our company is called Little Things Baby Baskets. We make baby baskets for families that maybe can't afford the basic necessities for their child or that are struggling.
At first we thought that wasn't, it wasn't that big of a deal, taking care of a baby. But as we did more research, it was such a big problem. So we decided we wanted to help out by making a baby basket.
In our basket, we included things like bottles, dummies, wipes, books and crayons and lots more, things that a mum would do when she's just had her baby or in the future.
Once the baskets were complete, we handed them out to members of staff, like our teacher, Missy Skelton, who said, it was perfect because I hadn't bought the stuff you gave me yet. So I was very prepared.
I feel more confident standing up and talking to a group of people after doing this award.
So when we were making the group, I think I'd do like another achievement with it because in the group, like all of us had like a different skill, like maybe one of us was doing the presentation, another one was making the actual baby basket. And so I'd probably do it again.
I would definitely do another Youth Scotland Award.
Yeah. Youth Scotland Awards are amazing.
Thanks so much for sharing that. That was great.
Yeah, Julie, it's just lovely to see young people, you know, just taking part and seeing it how it is and you can just see, you know, that they really are enjoying themselves. And that contrasts sharply to the Health and Wellbeing Census in Scotland, which found that only, I think it's around 57% of young people in Scotland agree that they are enjoying school, which is really quite a sad figure. And I think, you know, if we can bring in more, more of a variety through things like youth awards, then we can obviously help to make school much more enjoyable for them and just learning in general. This next slide, it's just going to touch on very briefly, it's really just to make you aware that sometimes people think that taking on youth awards means a whole lot of extra work. And we really want to reinforce that that doesn't have to be the case. There's lots of people on the ground in your community that we can direct you to that know how to do this and can make it so easy for you. Most of the awards providers have done a huge amount of work in the background to show how it maps to the curriculum and, you know, have found lots of other shortcuts and easy ways to get started or to make it a success. And so I think, as Julie and Jamie said from the Fourth Valley West Lothian report, it is that partnership working that is the key. And your partners in your area are really waiting to be asked, you know, to work with them. They really welcome these opportunities and want to enter a conversation with you about taking things like this forward. So take advantage of that because there's lots of resources there. And looking at those kind of resources, we have asked some of our providers for various tips and so on, and they have told us about, for example, there's the Outward Bound Trust, you know, just looking at the way that, you know, that they can make it easy, they can offer training and development, there's residentials. Quite often, if you take something like Outward Bound Trust, they have fundraisers and the fundraisers fund the residential opportunities. So just even knowing that there's that kind of funding available, that something that would normally be very expensive can cost a really tiny amount of money, working through our member organisations. So I think it's definitely worth, you know, finding out more about them and taking that forward. We've already heard a bit of a mention about the RSPB Wild Challenge, but again, you know, that's a very, one of our very flexible awards and they can, you know, make it quite adaptable and, you know, to the individuals involved or to the places that are in your area. And sometimes you'll think, oh, if I live in an urban area, I can't do a wild challenge, but they can make that work, even in an urban environment. There is lots of wildlife around and you just have to know where to look. And they have experts, you know, to guide you in the right direction. The PDC is Youth Link Scotland's award. And sometimes people overlook that because it's a level five award and people think, well, maybe that's a bit complicated. But if you've got young people that are interested in campaigning on things that they're passionate about, then looking at something like the Participative Democracy Certificate is a good way, a good way forward. So I think, you know, there's just, there's so many opportunities and case studies out there. And if you look at our website, you can have a good look through those and filter down to the ones that are of most interest to you. I'm not going to play any more videos because you've seen, you know, a really good case study already, but it's really just to make you aware that there are amazing videos there on the website that you can look through and they're all coming from different perspectives. So there's a video there from Leith Academy, the head teacher there, just about how they've introduced various youth awards into their, into their programmes. There's views from young people and community-based youth work. There's a video about recognising achievement and learning differently and using awards within the education landscape. And there's also one there about why youth work is key to recognising achievement. So there's, there are many more videos than that you can have a look at, but that's just some that we've picked out to highlight to you that you might want to go and find and watch in your own time. Just to sum up some of the things that we've covered today, we've created a checklist. And so down the left-hand side, the main criteria is that awards should have a clear purpose. You're trying to create an enriching learning experience and it needs to be tailored to the young person and working in partnership are some of the key criteria that you should be trying to take forward. In the essential column, we would say that, you know, having, any youth awards project must have that, that clear purpose in place and you need to make sure that the learning is experiential. So the whole point of the awards is to try and get beyond or look beyond the classroom and the school environment where possible. So it doesn't mean that you don't do anything within the school environment, but you're trying to mix things up and take people beyond that environment where, where that's possible to achieve. And you need to choose the right, the right award and the right level for the individual. So it's not really appropriate, you know, to, to start too high or too low. I've heard stories, for example, of quite older teenagers doing High Five Awards. when that's really geared towards a primary or younger, um, person. So if it's, if it's too easy, then it's probably not really going to be that enjoyable because young people actually do like it more when they're set a challenge. Um, we've created a preferable column. So, um, one of the things within that is that doing youth awards isn't ever about doing them for the sake of doing them. It's about, um, you know, doing it because you have a good reason or a good purpose. Um, and taking learning out of the classroom into the real world really helps to put the learning into a context, um, which is one of the things that young people really value, um, a lot from their experience. It's about being fun, um, and, um, making, and simple ways of, um, doing the activities, but also gathering the evidence. I liked the card in the video when, um, one of the young people put be silly as one of the rules. So having a, a rule of being silly is always a good ethos to have in your, in your learning programme, I think. I'm going to take that one forward. Um, and working in partnership is, one of the things is to choose an experienced local partner, as I've said. Um, and there are several out there that we can connect you with. So if you're not sure who to approach, um, get in touch and we can give you advice around that. At the advanced level, um, you know, if you're already doing awards and want to take it a step further, you can do things like making sure young people are choosing to take part and have a say in how it's done. Um, that always helps to strengthen the award and make it more relevant to the young people. And again, the, the health, um, census highlighted that young people, only forty three percent of young people in Scotland feel that they have a choice over their learning. Um, so if we can introduce things like this to give young people more agency over their learning, then we're going to help to improve those kinds of results, um, nationwide. You can maximise opportunities for accreditation through tailored, um, bespoke awards design. You can make sure that there's progression routes, um, in and beyond the award. So you can have, you know, things leading up to the award and you can have things that follow on from it. Um, and, you know, you can also do things, um, this is a slightly more advanced level, but a lot of people do engage in what we call dueling awards. So having dual accreditation, so that if you're doing a programme, you can usually look at, um, a couple of awards that can be achieved at the same time, um, within one singular project. So for example, if you're doing an award that has volunteering as part of it, you can get a Saltire Award, um, as part of what you're doing, as well as the main award that you're working towards. So there's lots there, um, to, to think about. We have some frequently asked questions. Um, I think what we'll do is put these onto the website. So after today, we'll load this up. And, um, and if you have questions that you want to give us that you'd like us to answer, then we'd love to be able to add them to our list. Um, I wanted to show you, um, I'm going to just share a link in the chat there. Um, so this next slide is just really, um, a bit of an interactive. Um, and it, we have thematic groups now within the awards network where we're bringing people together to look at how we can pull different awards together. Um, so to make it easier for you to work out, um, which awards complement each other. So that's one of the things that we're working on and that's a thing link that's interactive and you can, um, open up, uh, different bits of information on there. So again, that's something that's going to become available fairly soon on our website. Um, I think from this, we're going to, after today, send you a journey planner. Um, and this just gives you a little bit of a framework, um, where you can basically create your own awards journey from scratch. So if you're looking for a template to plan that journey, then we're going to give you this template to work with. Um, and you can work away at that. And if you get stuck, um, then don't stay stuck for long and get in touch, um, because there's lots of advice around that. And almost at the very end, um, we of course have an evaluation that we'd like you to fill in. We're going to ask you to use that QR code and fill it in just now, if that's okay. And the important reason for that is that part of the evaluation is that you give your, um, email address. And the reason that we're looking for your email address is that everyone that's taken part in this webinar, they'll receive an awards aware, um, certificate, which is basically our way of recognising that you have, um, you're now, you now have some awareness of awards and you get added to our mailing list and there's a quarterly newsletter that you'll receive. Um, and it just means that you're a recognised member of our wider, um, awards aware network. So you get to be in more regular contact with us, if you like. Um, and we've now made that connection and we're friends. Um, so fill in the, um, evaluation, um, and let us know, um, how you found today's webinar. We are hoping to do more, so any feedback is, is really welcome. And I don't know if John, Julie, Jamie, you have any final comments that you want to make as people are filling in their evaluation forms?
I'll just, I'll go first, um, just to, I found that, again, that this whole kind of collaboration of information that's been shared today really useful. And hopefully the people that have been here today have found it useful as well. Um, you know, you've seen a whole range of things from the, the breadth and depth of what the awards network offer and all the kind of the partners, um, in regards to the, the awards themselves. Um, you've hopefully gained a bit of confidence in some of the research that we've shared, um, about, you know, what different situations, different settings, different practitioners are thinking when it comes to, um, youth awards and different types of achievement. Um, and obviously those kind of, the video we saw, um, you can see that young people themselves see this benefit and they want that benefit because they recognise the skills that are being developed in themselves and they can reflect that. And that's where the real value is, um, hopefully the tool, um, Teela suggested there as well. Um, that planner is really a kind of a, a starting point, um, for where people think they should be and where they can go next. Um, and I think collaboration is key with all this. Um, and like I've already said previously, this is, you know, this is something we, we owe to the children and young people that we work with. We need to make sure that they have the best possible chance in life. Um, and we know that some don't have that opportunity. They may not get that range of qualifications that would prop them up and give them access to the further education or really lucrative job opportunities. But youth awards give them that chance to give them that, especially those that come from more marginalised, um, situations. So we have that sort of duty to make sure that they have the ability to take part in these awards and get that recognition where, um, the opportunity lies. Um, so that's all I wanted to add, just a sort of wee, kind of a couple of thoughts. John, Julie, I don't know if you want to add anything else as well?
Um, I think you've said it all there, Jamie, I suppose. Um, all I'd like to do is, uh, I hope people have had a bit of inspiration this afternoon. And please do take your time, go back and have a look at the awards network site. Look at the amazing things that are on there, look at the outcome and skills framework that we shared. Um, look at the videos again and, and share them widely with, uh, your networks. And as Teela says, we know who you are now, so we'll stay in touch. So thanks very much.